Good afternoon and welcome all of you to our December 14th briefing. And this is preparing us for our December 21st regular meeting, which will take place next Thursday at the same time. We do have, I think we have at least one person, at least Commissioner Plaller was online this morning for a session. I assume he's going to rejoin us for the afternoon. Commissioner Lemel could not be with us today, but Dan is here. And we have no just standalone discussion items, so we're simply going to review each of the items. And we have a long agenda for next week, closing out the calendar year. So I will call on our county manager to begin our march through the items.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We had a very long discussion item this morning, so we tried to accommodate this afternoon to really just be the review of this agenda for the December 21st meeting. So we do have one public hearing matter. It's a public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-250 on a proposed ordinance granting a non-emergency ambulance franchise within Forsyth County. And so it was briefed last Thursday, but I'll ask our emergency services director, Joey Hunley, to come up and just very quickly talk through the item in front of you. Obviously, our county attorney might want to add anything in that as it is a legal matter from that perspective.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman Martin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. This is, as County Manager Watts mentioned, the bringing back the county or the application of the franchise agreement for medics from continuation from our June 1st meeting. Application meets all of the, is complete, meets the standards per the county code, Chapter 5. And so we bring forth the application for you today. If there's questions on the needs for the system, I have representatives from, Mike Hoots is here from Livestar, Dave Stevens is here from Providence, the two current franchise services. And we have representatives, Stan Fuller, the attorney for Novant is here. And I don't know if anybody from Atrium is here. Wake Forest Baptist, okay, there we go, from Wake Forest Baptist. So the agenda item is before you. I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Joey?
I would perhaps just add that when it was tabled in June, you know, I think our system and the franchise systems, we were all in a little bit of a crisis from a hiring perspective and from a staffing perspective. We have, that has stabilized. We've done, run two academies through that have added more EMTs particularly into the system. And so I think the delay has been helpful from the perspective, we're doing it in somewhat of a different environment. We're not completely out of the woods. But how many vacancies do we have right now?
About 35 vacancies in EMS.
Do you remember where we were? We were...
We were in the neighborhood of 60.
Yeah, we were double that when this was tabled last June. So it is a different environment. The other challenge we have now really is around paramedic level. You know, the goal to get our paramedic level service back up where it needs to be. So as way of background, I'd want to add that.
Good. Anybody like to hear from anyone else?
I would. I'd like to hear from Mr. Hoots because that's one of the reasons why we waited six months, is to give him an opportunity to see if he could fill some of his vacancies.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Mike Hoots, live in Louisville. I just want to give you guys a quick update on how we've done with our hiring process. We've had a net increase of 15. I think our vacancies last May was around 30, 34. So we've made up about half of that gap. We've, I feel like we've done a pretty good job of reducing the amount of wait time for an ambulance on a scheduled side. And as a result of these headcount increases, we're picking up about an extra 230 calls per month here in Forsyth County. That's on the 911 side as well as the scheduled side. And just to remind everybody, we have a commitment here in Forsyth County to do 911 work, okay? And that work is done at no cost to Forsyth County, okay? We handle approximately 7,000 of these calls a year. 7,000. And it doesn't cost Forsyth County a dime other than answering the telephone and dispatching our ambulance. So we do that, and as you know from your own budget, running a 911 system happens at a loss. You just can't make money in that area. Forty-seven percent of our 911 calls are either self-pay or Medicaid, and that averages about $17 in revenue per transport. It doesn't even pay for the fuel that it takes to drive to your house and take you to the hospital, much less the people. Our commitment to the county is they require us to have three 12-hour shifts each day in the 911 sector. And that's six days a week. On Sundays, we're down to two 911 trucks for a total of 24 hours, okay? That means that we're putting an ambulance out there in the 911 system for 240 hours each week. That's expensive. It's expensive to do that. We make up that revenue by doing transports for the hospitals. That's exactly where that comes from. And you guys give us the privilege to be able to do that, okay? So it's absolutely in our best interest to move every patient that they need as quick as we can do it. That's absolutely our highest interest. Allowing another company to come in here does not reduce our responsibility to the 911 system. Our expenses stay the same, but the revenue resource diminishes, okay? Now you have, you have other folks in there pulling from the same pool that we require to fund our 911 side. That's the hard part for us, okay? That's basically all I wanted to express to you folks today. I think we've made a lot of progress since May, and we're not finished. We've got a lot more to go. My goal is for every time they call, that we've got somebody that we can send to them, to the hospitals. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hoots? Thank you for coming again, expressing that.
Thank you.
Is there...
If Representatives of Novant and Atrium are here, prepared to speak to this, sorry. If Representatives of Novant and Atrium are here, prepared to speak to this question, I would be interested in hearing their evaluation of current wait times for non-emergency transport.
Yeah, you can both come up. Sure.
Thank you, Chairman Martin and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Stan Fuller. I'm a physician. I'm a senior vice president, chief clinical officer at Novant Health, and I serve in this Winston-Salem market and focus my efforts at Forsyth Medical Center. So that's kind of the context of my discussion. We certainly appreciate the service to date from the franchises that are currently in place in the county, and certainly we could not function without them. That said, on any given day at Forsyth Medical Center, we have several patients who are in need of transportation from our facility to another facility in this county. An example would be a skilled nursing facility, for example. So those are scheduled, but they happen sometimes all of a sudden because the patient is ready to go home today. To the extent that there are delays in that process, then that puts a fair amount of capacity constraints on our system. And the person who probably feels it the most is the person who just gets dropped off at the emergency room by the, one of the ambulances, who then has to sit in our emergency room because we don't have a bed for them upstairs in the patient room. So this is the game of the flow capacity constraints that we face every day. On average, about six patients a day are, need that type of transportation. These are patients who just need ambulance-type transportation again to another facility. Predating COVID, so for some time now and continuing post-COVID, we, when we call for transportation, on average, we get response times anywhere from six hours to up to two days. So while, I just want to make sure that the Commissioners understand that in the context of delays in those types of requests, it has a significant impact on our system. We understand that everybody's doing the best that they can with, from the standpoint of dealing and triaging with patients with more acute needs. In that context, we were granted an exception back in 2021 whereby we could provide some of those local transports within the county using our own trucks. And that was an exception that was given to us, and we have absolutely taken advantage of that. And the way that is put in place is every time we have a need, we make a call to the existing services. And if they aren't able to provide transportation in a timely fashion, then we will discharge one of our trucks to provide that service. It's that important to us to move that patient on to their next location so that the patient who's in our emergency department or coming out of our OR has a place to go. So we, I can't say that I'm here to argue necessarily for or against how many franchises we have in the system. I think that, what I can say is we continue to experience delays. We have been able to manage that somewhat by assisting with our own trucks internally. I think that that need is likely to continue simply because these issues are often arise on any given day and have significant input that we can best manage as it relates to the stress on our facility. I have to take any...
Do you have a rush, rough idea about how many transports you all make a day using your trucks?
On average, six per day.
Six, six people, okay. Okay, any other questions?
Just a question, query for our Novant representatives. Do you have the same internal capacity to release your vehicles for inter, not agency, of course, inter-facility, transport when the private franchisees are filled up and have long wait times?
Yes. My name is Dr. Richard Aronson. I'm the medical director for care coordination for the Atrium Health Wake Forest Baptist System. In reference to the direct question, yes, we have that capacity through air care. We typically will use it only if our transport and reaching out to the current vendors cannot provide that service that day. And I think we estimate about, last month, doing about 100 of those transports. Honestly, I came more to represent the patients and the people. Ultimately, this is a different day and age. You know, I also practice as an internist in town. I practice at the receiving nursing homes. This is a day and age where there's very little leeway that when someone's ready to leave, they need to go. There's a lot resting on it. If it's a hospice patient wanting to get home that day to spend their remaining hours at home, they may not have the next day or the day after to get there. If it's someone with a post-acute benefit at skilled nursing, they're authorized from their payer. You know, they have liability out of pocket if they don't get there that day, and their quality of care issues as well. And certainly those of the 20 to 30 people waiting in the emergency room, as my Novant colleagues has pointed out, you know, waiting another day, two or three in that year for a bed that could easily be unloaded and moved elsewhere is critical.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I did not mean to turn this into a public hearing. But for next week, if I could ask Mr. Hoots and probably someone from the other franchise to maybe share with us why the delays at the hospital. And let us know what that problem is. If you could do that next week, please.
All right. And I'll, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll just echo what the vice chair just stated. The official public hearing is next week, next week's meeting on the 21st. And so anyone who's interested in this issue, either for the new franchise or against it or wanting to make comments on it, should also appear next week. So it'll be official and on the record. I will speak very briefly to the issue that was brought up. The franchise, franchises that the county has granted to the hospital systems for ground transport does not include the transport to nursing homes. As was stated during COVID, they were granted an exception because they stated that they were not receiving adequate services from the current franchises to handle those. And so ultimately, somehow, that will need to be sorted out as to how those transports should take place.
Got it. Okay. I guess if there are no more questions, we'll wait for next week. Thank you all for being here and for being willing to come up and share. Thank you.
Very good. We have, we have one special recognition. It's item two. It's a resolution designating Forsyth County official to make recommendations to the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission on ABC permit applications. Gordon, you just want to quickly remind the board what that is?
That's just to name, name a party who can testify if there's a contested hearing about receiving, who should receive an ABC permit. Traditionally, that's been someone with the sheriff's office.
All right. Thank you, Gordon. Any questions on that? All right. Item three, approval of the minutes, and they are?
The minutes will go out tomorrow.
Very good. So keep your eyes out for those. We have several budget and finance items. Kyle Wilson's going to come up and talk about an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget, ordinance to transfer funding from contingency to Forsyth Technical Community College to account for salary increases approved as part of the state budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So over the past several years, during the budget process, we would set, we'll set funds aside in contingency for possible salary increases for locally funded positions at Forsyth Tech. And with the state passing their budget with a, with an increase for salaries, this action is basically transferring those funds or a portion of those funds from contingency in order to increase the appropriation for Forsyth Tech. Happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
Any questions? We're good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Somebody's phone's up here. I'm not sure. There's a phone up here.
I bet you it's somebody who just walked out the door. Can you grab it from when they walk in and maybe Darrell Walker? Okay. Do you want your phone back?
It's not mine.
Oh, okay. All right. Hmm, okay. Well, let's go on to the next item. Agenda item five is an amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Project Ordinance. It's the Brunson Elementary School Replacement Project. Adam Fernbach from our finance office will review this, but I see Tommy Krantz back there and some other folks from the school system. So, Adam.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item is a request for $27,249,179.78 from the Budget Reserve in the 2016 Schools Capital Project Ordinance. This is to increase the funding for the Brunson Elementary School Replacement Project. Brings the total cost of the project to $52,474,000. And approval of it would leave, excuse me, about $8,100,000 remaining in the original $350 million of approved funding for the overall CPO.
Questions? I've got a couple, but if you're ready to start with.
My only question is, where's the other $8 million? How is that being allocated?
Yeah, so that is, that is in the Budget Reserve account, and that is available for other projects that, you know, were approved under the bond referendum but have not been started or have not been funded, or some might have an increase in costs just as the Brunson project has increased in cost from the original plan.
I have a number of questions about the, basically, as I recall, I believe the original budget for this project was about $25 million back in, probably made actually in 2015 before the 2016 bond issue. And, and we all know, there's been a lot of inflation, but I don't think it's doubled. And this is, this is taking it from a $25 million project to 52. And I guess I'd be really interested in hearing whether, how much the scope of the project has changed because that addition, that initial request, the initial budget that put that together used some kind of square footage footprint for the building. I'm kind of curious, because I think I actually saw that you've got about 102,000 or 3,000 square feet in this building, and I'm curious if that was the original scope back when the original budget was put together.
Yeah. Yeah, Adam, you probably, let's defer to some school folks, and if we need to pull you back up, we will. So thanks, Adam.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Yeah, I mean, there, you know, if you, if you go back and look in the previous bonds, elementary's were around 90,000, 95,000 square feet. So there, there is some kind of spread there between now and then, and a lot of that being how you use the building and the services and some additional, maybe some office space and a couple of different classrooms. But right now, we're right at 102,000 square feet, back to what your original comments there, Dr. Martin, is, is that this project was budgeted unfortunately in 2014 at around $200 a square foot, and we're going to track every bit of a little north of 400 and so. So hard to believe, hard to believe for all of us, but that's kind of what we live in. And talk to folks across the state, everybody's experiencing it. You're going to see it again when we come back for East Forsyth. And it's just, it's just a very unfortunate situation at a cost. Supply-wise, things are kind of in line. Labor-wise is kind of what's driving a lot of this right now.
I guess, I guess the difference between roughly 90,000 square feet and 102,000 or 4,000, whatever it is, you're looking at better than $4 million difference in cost in today's, today's world. And it just strikes me that, because this, you've had to cancel several projects, and some of those made a lot of sense. You do not have money to do the East Forsyth project at all, which at least I think some of us were led, led to believe that that money was going to be available. It does not appear that it will at all. You have $8 million towards another 30-some-odd million that's going to be over. And it seems like every possibility and, and design to, you know, to reduce the scope of the project and square footage, and that has everything to do with how many moving-around feet you have in hallways and this and that and whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that's, that is clearly an issue.
Yeah, the, looking at the core is probably the next phase. I will tell you, we reduced the school from a capacity of 800 to 600. So we took 200 seats out of it, kind of a, you know, our standard in the '06 bond was 800 student elementary school. We've taken all the Trazo floors out down to polished concrete. We've taken all the block walls down to sheet rock. And so we have, and that comes with a little bit of a problem, quite honestly, maintenance-wise down the road. But we have snipped it quite a bit, and so, you know, you continue to put eyes on it and look at it, but we're at a point where it's, it's on the street, on the street to bid, and we'll, you know, need to kind of get some funding in place. So hopefully, who knows when the bids come back, hopefully things will look better than they do.
Yeah, I have some other questions I may, I hear what you're saying about the timing. I guess maybe, and I don't want to speak for any other commissioner, but I'm probably overall pretty disappointed, basically, in the, in that budget and the scope of that project, the site that it's on, and a couple of those things. I just think, and I know the, I know the problems, yeah. I mean, I've known, been to look at a lot of different sites, a lot of different issues, but I'm a little concerned probably about what's happening with Samaritan Ministries' issue there. And I guess they're going to have to change some operating procedures on their part. And that's on, on some agencies in this community that do a lot to try to support our, certainly population that has lots of challenges. This actually is also going to add more to them. So I just have, I have not good feelings about this project. And that has a tendency to begin to influence the remainder of the projects that are undone, that basically you all have already asked us for additional money. We've already set aside, we're able to find $77 million more dollars. And I just have this fear that all that's going to get spent and not be, and we're going to be back into this, into, you know, a very difficult situation again. So I guess it's just, I just, I'm expressing my personal frustration with this.
Nearly, nearly accepted. I will tell you, I had a really good conversation, I've had two really good conversations with Jan King, the executive director, Samaritan Ministries. And I'll tell you her outlook, and if she were here, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but her words to me were, I see this as a revitalization of that, that community there, in that besides, with the, it's a school, and then next to us on the same property is Two Cities Church. And so they see some correlation to kind of a rebranding and an opportunity to, in that community. And so she is, she's reaching out to the school about partnerships and things of that nature. Some of the concerns I know that we have there, the population they serve, in all honesty, we deal with that every day, especially like Career Center, Carter, Kennedy, a lot of foot traffic goes through that campus every day, right? We don't get concerned about it until they just congregate, and then law enforcement takes over. But, but we deal with a lot of that every day anyway, quite honestly. And, and if you know about elementary teachers and elementary school, they understand stranger danger quite a bit. So they, they are very alert to what's on their campuses. And so I'm not trying to shed light to change your mind, I just know that we manage it and we deal with it day in and day out. We evaluated, the original list was 29 different sites. It got down to 19 different locations for this school. As Woodbury may remember, there was a lot of conversation of getting narrowed it down to where we were in order to try to make this best work within that residential zone. Just got to remember, you got to fit within the footprint. And so, you know, one of the better probably options was over in the innovation quarter, but we all realize that that's economic development, that was important. And so that kind of backed off some of that as well. But challenge, I, I hear you, I understand it, but I do think it's an opportunity to change the neighborhood. And that's the way I kind of see it and look at it, so.
Commissioner Whiston.
Darrell, I've spent a lot of years working with you, and I have a great deal of faith in you, but I am disappointed in this, but I don't blame you for it. I'm just disappointed that an elementary school is going to be $52 million. Could you get us a list of the projects that were in the bond that will now be fulfilled now, so that we, we know where we stand?
Yeah, I will send that to you, and I'll just go ahead and tell you, it's Smith Farm, Ward and Griffith projects that are kind of, those funds are being reallocated to this project. That's kind of what, what this is, what's driving this one is then, and Griffith was a pre-K project, the Ward was kind of an expansion with a cafeteria expansion. Enrollment there's been down a little bit, so it was kind of not justified, but we could justify not doing that. And then the Smith Farm was a middle school, obviously in that Smith Farm area on that kind of southeast corner over there. And so kind of what helped that, in all honesty, was when the board put a residential zone around the current Haynes Building, the old Hill Building, those kids that was choosing to go to Southeast, where we went from 800 to 1200, came back home. And when they did, it filled up the Haynes, current Haynes Building, and it gave us some relief at Southeast that allowed us to kind of postpone this one for just a period of time. You're going to see it come back. It's going to come back down in the, at the end of the decade. I can just tell you, with, with 5, 6,000 homes being built in that corner, it's going to come back, just a matter of time. But... it's going to come back, it's just a matter of time, but right now, I think we can, we can weigh the storm with it, and that's kind of the reason behind the request.
Do you think the parents, those schools are aware that this?
We had, we had three different public hearings at, at Old Brunson, I think we have one of the staff members, I thought, I thought he heard, yeah. So, we had three different meetings there with parents and, and staff back in August of two thousand twenty, I believe it was, and so we had the architect there with kind of the schematics and had a table with folks from, just about the resources of, you know, the concern about contamination and things of that nature, so there was, there was, there was three different hearings, I don't think we came out in any of those with anybody being negative about the move.
Well, I just, my concern is that when we, the board approves placing a bond referendum out for the voters and they vote on it, I hate when the projects are changed, I hate that.
Look, I agree with you.
And I think it'll be hurtful in the future to bond refer.
I've always been a believer, you do what you say, and so it's, it's tough, it's really tough to do that, and very unfortunate, quite honestly, and I, I don't think any of us ever anticipated 2014, we'd be where we are today, and it's, it's challenging to say the least, in this current market. I, I don't, I don't know how you, how you win in it, quite honestly, it's a win for the contractors, it's a struggle for us that are having to pay the bills, or folks like yourself.
Any other questions, Darrell?
I don't know if I have a question, but maybe as I'm kind of thinking through, because of course, as you mentioned, I was on the board, and I, what I do remember, just to share with the commissioners and the public, again, is that the staff and the families of Brunson were very proactive about moving in this direction. I can say legitimately in all authenticity that one of my main concerns about the current site was just the, the Brownfield site issue, which I knew that, that although I may not have been on the board when it, all of this kind of came to fruition, we didn't know if that would even come through as, yes, you can build on the site, but I think that the school board and this community heard loud and clear, and I'm sure Brunson staff and parents probably will be back next Thursday to make sure we here as a commission, that this is a site that they are very supportive of, and, you know, the scenario that we face right now, I understand what Vice Cheryl Wizard Hunt is saying, that you're disappointed that it's not the amount that the bond sort of dictates, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not a perfect, you know, I guess, process as relates to things that we can't foresee in the future.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard for all of us, it's, it's hard when I know in 2012 I built that kind of same school at eleven and a half million dollars, and so that just tells you where we are. I mean, it's just, there's no frills in this, it's a, it's a box with a nice entry front on it, and that is it, and so it's, just, I don't know how to explain it much further than that, it's just really challenging.
No more questions, thanks.
Agenda item six is a resolution authorizing an increase to the project contingency for the Public Safety Center Upfit Project. Kimberly Bussie with Budget Management will come up, and there's two associated budget ordinance amendments.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item stems in the change, stems from a change request by the Sheriff's Office to the Public Safety Center Upfit Project that is currently underway on the third floor of the Public Safety Center Building. The Sheriff's Office has requested the addition of office space for the Real-Time Intelligence Center Supervisor that was not included in the original project budget or, or plan, and the Sheriff's Office has agreed to fund this change in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. So to accommodate this change, this item increases project contingency by not amount, amends the FY24 budget ordinance to transfer funds from the Sheriff's Office into the CPO, and amends the 2020 Pago CPO to accept the transfer. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this item, and we have James Anderson here as well, if there's any project-specific questions you may have.
Any questions?
Maybe perhaps when the project's going to, we think the project's going to end up, James? Timeline on the project? Okay, so we'll actually be doing some type of, I don't know if we want to do a ribbon-cutting or just at least a grand opening up there in late February, so. Thanks, Kimberly. All right, we have two items that Kyle Haney's going to come up and review. Item seven's a resolution authorizing acceptance of a historic preservation matching grant, and he'll talk about that one, and then there's also an application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Manager said, this is a resolution accepting award that the Historic Research Commission applied for and were awarded to help fund the Forsyth County Architectural Survey Update. If you recall, this is a project that's been going on since 2017 to review historic properties within the county and municipalities who are participating, and develop a manuscript, which will ultimately be published into a book. We received several grants throughout this process, this grant funds the final phase of the manuscript development portion of it, so the next phase after that will be the publication. The grant award is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, it requires a twenty thousand dollar match, the county does half of that, ten thousand, and then the participating municipalities, which is Clemmons, Kearnsville, Willisville, Bethania, Walbertown, and Royal Hall, fund the rest of that. That's already budgeted in the budget, this is really just accepting that award. Michelle McCullough with the Planning Department, who heads the Historic Research Commission, is here, if you have any additional questions.
Questions for Kyle? All good.
All right, the next item here is an application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for the 2024 Urgent Repair Program. This is a program that we apply for every year and generally receive a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Those funds go towards repairing home repairs for homeowners who are at fifty percent area median income or below and have qualifying needs. These are really repairs that keep these people in their house, so someone needs a roof replacement, heating and air replacement, those types of things, twelve thousand dollars per, per property, and if awarded, we'd be able to start that in fall of 2024. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kyle?
Good. Thank you. Agenda item nine's a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and its Division of Emergency Management for participating, participation in a mutual aid agreement. August Vernon, our emergency management director, will review this.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Real quick, I'll just give you a little background on the mutual aid agreement system. The North Carolina Mutual Aid System is a voluntary agreement among all North Carolina local governments to share resources during disasters. Up to this point in time, all one hundred counties, the eastern band of Cherokee Indians, and nearly over half of the six hundred and fifty municipalities have signed the mutual aid agreement, so I'll be taking the same agreement before the city next year. What the, what the agreement does is participating in the system provides an efficient and effective assistance among all government in a disaster, and can help and provide a little faster reimbursement from the state and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The mutual aid system was developed following Hurricane Fran in 1996, for those that remember that, and at that time, there was really no uniform agreement amongst all the counties and municipalities, how they could help each other even when they had resources to assist each other. And so we have been, or Forsyth County has been a member of the mutual aid agreement since 1996, and every few years, it was not on a fixed schedule, and a new updated agreement would come out, and it addresses things such as logistics, deployment, interstate cooperation. So this year, a new agreement has been released, and so it was time, number one, to revisit the agreement and bring it to the board for the first time. There's, there's three layers to the process, the first is the Office of Emergency Management, we're the twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five point of contact if needed for the agreement, and we will assist in coordinating resources for the jurisdiction. And I think it's important to note that on the back row, all three of our public safety entities behind me, both Fire, Emergency Medical Services, and the Sheriff's Department, have responded over the years to requests for mutual aid assistance across the state, and we also in Forsyth County have been recipients of assistance from other jurisdictions. Also part of this agreement, the other layer, is our local chief executive officer with the authority to sign for the jurisdiction, and now there is a board action authorizing us to sign the agreement. And there's really two major changes with the agreement. It no longer requires a local state of emergency declared to activate it, that has sort of been a loose rule, but they have now codified that, and it can be utilized for both planned events, if we have a future presidential debate, another large concert, some other type of event that's planned that we know is going to happen, or in response to some crisis or disaster. We no longer have to have a state of emergency to request those resources, and probably the bigger part of this is now it does require this body, the jurisdiction's chief executive board, or any other body to sign off on it. So that's why really, for the first time, we're bringing it to the board. The other changes are really just formatting, minor language changes, and other administrative changes. So I, I personally believe that this is a critical tool for us to have in our toolbox. Again, we have used it, we have both responded and received resources, and it'll help us maintain our readiness for mission success. So, again, a real brief note of what it is, thank you for allowing me to present it to you, and what questions would you have about the agreement?
Any questions for August? I, I think it's obviously been a worthwhile endeavor, and I think it continues to be improved, and I appreciate you giving us that thorough overview.
I did not want to say a no-brainer to this group, so definitely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item ten's going to be reviewed by Nicole Pretty from Public Health, it's a resolution ratifying and authorizing an execution of an interlocal agreement for public school health nursing services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman Martin. The item before you is an agreement, an interlocal agreement that will allow for the Public Health Department's School Health Program to receive payment for providing comprehensive school health nursing services to the district's most medically fragile students with special educational needs. These services are provided by seven school nurses at five different school sites on a daily basis, and the cost for these services will not, will not exceed four hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Nicole?
If I may ask, Nicole, on the top of your head, do you know those schools that are receiving services?
I do. They are the Children's Center, the Special Children's School, Petrie Elementary, Lawrence Middle, and Carter High School.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all, Chairman.
Other questions? We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Krista Smith is going to review agenda item eleven, it's a resolution authorizing an execution agreement between Forsyth County and Vanguard Professional Staffing Incorporated for Department of Social Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, we are bringing before you an amendment to an existing contract with Vanguard Professional Staffing. This is necessary to be able to continue to support the vacancies that we have in our social work staff and our child welfare division. Initially, we thought we would be able to make it through the year with the forty-nine thousand that we had, we did budget for seventy-five thousand, so we are looking to extend it, we won't have to move any money around to, to amend this contract. It is increasing the funding by twenty-six thousand, the billable rates are remaining unchanged, this is a sole-source contract because they do provide us with already pre-service-trained social workers that are ready to go and start accepting cases the moment they walk in our door. The rates are considered fair and reasonable for these services by FCDSS management, in addition to the hourly rates, assigned work-related business mileage is charged through this contract. The total payments under this agreement are not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars through the federal fiscal year, I'm sorry, through our fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-four, without executing an additional amendment. This agreement is going to be funded with fifty percent federal and state funding and fifty percent county funding.
Any questions for Krista?
So my only question is relative to the overtime, are you guys monitoring that?
We are monitoring it, yes, so we, we route that through an approval process, and we're really trying not to tax our own existing staff as much as we can manage it, but yeah.
You know what the percentages might be?
Um, no, but I can follow up, so you're wanting to know the percentage?
Of the overtime?
Of overtime.
Utilization.
Utilization.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's good.
All right, thank you.
Very good. All right, Cindy Furkins with DSS is going to come up and review items twelve and thirteen. Item twelve's a resolution authorizing an execution agreement between Forsyth County and Resource Company Incorporated for increasing services and funding, and then item thirteen is additional software license for the I-reception application, Cindy.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to request amendments to existing agreements. The first item on the agenda is to amend the agreement with the Resource Incorporated for administrative and physical temporary staffing needs. The temporary staffing will be utilized where needed, including low-income energy assistance program, agency administrative and physical staffing needs, and the administrative functions for the Medicaid expansion. An RFP was issued June seventeenth of twenty-two, we had sixteen proposals, the Resource Company was identified as having the best overall proposal to fulfill the requirements of the RFP and awarded the contract for an initial term from date of award up to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, with the right to extend each contract for two additional one-year terms through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. The total annual contract payments were not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty-three, and an additional eighty thousand for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And it consists of twenty thousand in costs allocated federal, state, and county funds for the temporary agency administrative staff, and sixty thousand for the low-income energy assistance program administrative staff, and the lead staff is one hundred percent federal funding. And expenses for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for the resource temporary staffing totaled seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars out of the eighty thousand dollar contract. And the need for this current amendment is, is purely due to the Medicaid expansion. And what we're looking for is to possibly add an additional sixty thousand dollars for the Medicaid expansion. We, we think that the population of those eligible for Medicaid with the expansion will be an additional forty-five thousand residents, and that represents a forty percent increase as we currently serve a hundred and twelve thousand Forsyth County citizens for Medicaid. The billable service rates remain the same, and that rate, billable rate is twenty-two dollars and eight cents per hour, and this amendment would allow DSS to begin with possibly three or four temporary administrative staff to help in the lobby area with the kiosk check-in, answering phone calls, man in the call center, just various things that are definitely needed with this expansion. And if we added two temporary staff, that would allow us funding needs for the Medicaid expansion all the way through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Cindy?
Did I dream this? I thought the state was going to pick up all the expenses for expansion.
They have funded, is my understanding that is, there was a budget ordinance to hire staff, not necessarily for the temporary staffing, Krista?
Yes, so with the passing of the budget, the state has allocated money to us for Medicaid expansion, and we are able to submit our invoices that we use through contracts when we submit everything for reimbursement, so we are expecting to be able to get reimbursed for this.
Thank you.
But reimbursement for the federal dollars?
I'm sorry?
Cindy indicated that this was, this, this resource, the guys were going to be reimbursed using federal dollars, so, so I, I'm, I'm missing this too.
Okay.
So if we were having state dollars, kind of this commitment from the budget, from the state budget? the state budget, we're reimbursing federal dollars?
Federal funding is for the low-income energy assistance program. That's 100% federal.
Okay.
This contract covers some different areas. What we're expanding for right now is the specific purpose of Medicaid, so that will get reimbursed as Medicaid does.
Yeah, I think it's confusing because, you know, we're state-supervised, locally-administered, so it's all federal, basically.
Well, I knew it's federal money, but also, but I knew the Medicaid expansion part's federal money. And I guess the state was dedicating some of their federal money to reimburse needs, I suspect.
Well, their federal money is our money. We're state-supervised, locally-administered, so it's...
We receive all of our federal funds.
I guess it all goes through, it all goes through the DHHS office regardless, is where it's going, and you're right, it makes no difference. I do have one question, just a general question unrelated to money. Since, you know, we're in what, almost three weeks, two weeks in? How, since Medicaid expansion went live, sort of what kind of, you know, inquiries? I mean, are the inquiries, were they, I mean, quick? I mean, people coming in, lots of processing going on?
So we're still pulling together some numbers, but initially, what we are seeing is not as enhanced of foot traffic and people presenting in person, but we are seeing about three times the amount so far of online applications since the first of December. So we're seeing people apply.
Well, that's good. Going well. Any other questions? Like, we got it. Thank you. And Cindy, you have the second one coming up here.
I've got the second one.
You have number 13, item 13.
Okay, so this one is an amendment to the agreement between Forsyth County and Information Inc. A little background on Information Inc. On April the 16th, 2018, MIS Management Information Services researched and initiated a contract on behalf of DSS as a sole source agreement to provide hosting and maintenance services for the day sheet coding application that works exclusively with social services departments in reporting employee work hours for reimbursement purposes. And then again, on July 1st, 2020, MIS reached out to Information Inc. to add the I-reception application to the existing hosting and maintenance services to replace the outdated focus reception module as customization services were much more efficient and cost-effective than changing suppliers. And the I-reception application is an electronic system to manage reception information, assign employees to assist customers at the DSS building, including software, a kiosk system for check-in, a television display in the lobby to provide information to customers and visitors. So my second request today is an amendment to the Information Inc. agreement for the contracting of additional software for three tablets, surface tablets, to be utilized by staff to assist customers with check-in due to the Medicaid expansion. The software fee is $330 per month for license, and this amendment is necessary to increase the funding by $6,930 for the period ending June 30th, 2024. In addition, we are requesting a subsequent agreement for fiscal year '25 for a not-to-exceed amount of $88,000 to continue providing the access to the I-reception application, and also to include the additional annual fee of $12,750 for the software licenses for tablet usage. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Cindy? I don't hear any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item 14 is a resolution approving the purchase of law enforcement body worn cameras, in-vehicle cameras, and associated stuff around the Axon Enterprise contracts. Randy Hunsucker and Captain Petty Court, I believe, will come back up. We reviewed this in some detail last Thursday, really as a discussion item, knowing that there would be a fair number of questions. I know there was an email that was sent that included a memo earlier in the week that hopefully attempted to answer any questions, but any introductory things you guys want to say to us, we'll introduce them, and we'll see if they're questions.
First off, good afternoon, commissioners and Chairman Martin. Randy did send a memo out, kind of touching on some things we talked about last week as far as, you know, needing two body worn cameras. And I know Mr. Watts had some questions about the battery life. So I did a little bit of research with Axon as far as the batteries. That body cam, you know, doing the GPS positioning, the aspect ratio, the high-definition video, the live streaming, that's going to wear that battery down. So that's why it doesn't last a 12 and a half hour shift getting into the, you know, why we need two body cams. Again, an officer downloads, you know, he records whatever calls he's on, he goes to upload that stuff, he docks his camera in, and not only is it charging, but it's docking, it's uploading all the video off of it. It's going to take a while. You can't do it till you're into your shift, so they're going to be around for, on average, if it's a slow night, probably about four hours. If it's a busy night where he's got a lot of recordings, and plus there's a firmware update, they take upwards of about six to 10 hours, just depending. So an officer can't stay there and wait because what's going to happen if they dock it and leave, Murphy's Law is going to kick in, and that officer's going to get involved in something either on the way home or on the way back to work their next shift. So that's why it's very important to have those two cameras.
Yeah, we certainly would not have expected people to wait for charge-ups and pay them for waiting. That was part of Randy's explanation, and no one would have ever thought of that, Randy, I don't believe. But I think the question of, I think all of us know that battery technology has improved enormously, and clearly is to Axon's benefit for the battery to need recharging and to get two for one. Wouldn't you rather sell two for the price, I mean, wouldn't you rather sell two when you could only sell one if you had a better battery and recharging system? Wouldn't be wanting to look for that battery. I'd be saying, I'm pretty happy with the way this is going.
Well, that's...
Although you're right about the demand on energy for what it does. I gotta admit, that's a drainer.
Yeah, it does.
But I do know that if batteries, if batteries can power a drone to pick up a piece of freight and move it that weighs hundreds of pounds, my guess is, is that they're probably small batteries.
That would be a pretty big drone, too. That's bigger than drones.
Well, they exist.
And I know our drone batteries only last about 30, 35 minutes.
But I'm just saying that in terms of power and the capability, it's got to be huge capability. Anyway, it's back to, I think the county manager expressed it very well. There's a huge monopoly that we're at their mercy. But I also agree that it does a lot. I mean, I've had to, I acknowledge that it really does a lot. It is seamless, saves a lot of time, gives a lot of good data, but there's going to be someone that's going to take them out in the future. I mean, that's coming. So anyway, I have no more questions. Anyone else have questions? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Randy, stay up there because agenda item 15 is yours. It's three parts, the resolution authoring contracts to NAF Care for medication-assisted treatment and jail services, also one for addiction recovery care, Association Incorporated, and Insight. So Randy and Ms. Frye. So, all right. You were not on my list, but it's glad to have you, so.
I don't know how I did not get on, but thank you. Anyway.
You've always been on my list a little bit, but anyway, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, commissioners, as you have before you, we were granted a grant from the Department of Public Safety out of North Carolina for $388,884 to use for the MAP program in the detention centers. We're one of four counties that received this money. This money will replace where the county funded a data program in the past. If you remember Jim O'Neill, we had a data program that we were using Vivitrol. Vivitrol, they were trying to spread it across the state. They came up with legislature granting this money. This money is, does not have to be matched or anything. The agreements are attached. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those. Agreements will be with NAF Care, Insight, and ARCA. And it's pretty much the process we used when we had the data program, which is still ongoing in the detention center.
Any questions for Susan?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Susan.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We may have one question. Hang on a second.
Actually, this is on item 6. Were we supposed to have a paperwork on my...
Which one's there?
Item 6.
Thank you, Susan. Sorry.
The Public Safety Center up fit, which is why I thought to ask.
There was, there was, I read the attachment that went with this.
Okay, well, I just need to get a copy of it.
Yeah, it was, it was in there. It was in there because I remember the 9110 or whatever it is, additional office that's identified in that.
It may not have printed, there might have been a printer error, but it looks like it's good in the system.
Yeah, I read it.
Yep.
All right.
Very good. Agenda item 16 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and WEAE LLC to manage and operate accommodation facilities within Tanglewood Park. And Constantine Stomati, who is our business manager for the park system, will review.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'd like to start off by providing just a brief overview of the man house operation. The man house operation consists of the man house itself, the guest house, the lodge apartment, and the four cottages, which are all located within Tanglewood Park. For the past three years, the operations have been managed by Tayside Cape Providence, which is a subdivision of the Second Harvest Food Bank. And after Providence opted out not to renew its lease, county staff sought a new private sector operator for these facilities. So a request for proposals was issued through City-City Purchasing on July 18th, 2023. The RFP was advertised in the Western Journal and as well as was directly sent to 40 vendors. A pre-bid meeting for interested parties was conducted on August 3rd, and four firms participated. Proposals were to be submitted by August 18th. One proposal was submitted by a local operator named WEAE LLC. Key elements of their proposal are the following. The county receives 6% of their net monthly revenue derived from room reservations, restaurant, and dining revenue. The county receives 10% of their net monthly revenue derived from any event space rentals, inclusive of catering and event planning services. 10% of their monthly room reservation revenue will be dedicated towards facility reservations. The county matched the revenue generated under this section up to an annual cap of $7,500. And lastly, WEAE LLC will pay $1,417.66 monthly towards the utility expenses. The initial lease term is two years with the option to extend for three more years for a maximum total of five total years. And the county has already advertised the notice of such proposed lease as required. And with this, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
That's good.
Did you say there were other folks who answered the RFP?
The four of them, like four in total, attended the pre-bid meeting, but we received only one proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I don't really have any question about the proposal in front of us. I just wondered, did Providence give any indication of why they were not renewing the lease?
Well, the only assumption we speculated is because of the new building they have. They build like they, I think they...
Yeah, we, they reached out to us. I spoke with Mr. Bacon and with Eric Aff about it, and my sense was, and maybe Damon can add in, that it was, it was a sort of a new entry, particularly into the accommodation side of it. I mean, obviously, they've done a lot of culinary teaching, and they've done that. I think it was really a function of sort of a redirected focus on, you know, sort of the original purpose of Trad Community Kitchen, really around the educational piece of it. I know just anecdotally, I'd go out there and I did not see as many of their students who kind of matriculated through. So I think it was pulling them away from sort of their core mission, and they got into it, did it for a while. I got to thank them. They actually got into it and operated during COVID. It was a, it was a tough slog, and then they had actually spent a fair amount of money on the facilities to get started up. And so they were great to continue operations. They actually have continued. Are we actually doing it now, or they're continuing operations as of right now?
As of right now, until the end of the year, yes.
Yeah, so they made for a real easy shift back. And I think from the, you know, I know from my personal perspective, having an outside vendor in there, because prior to Trad Community Kitchen, we actually managed that ourselves, and we just did it in-house, which was really not within our mission. You know, with, you know, the idea that you've got another entity out there doing that and, you know, the hospitality piece, while we do some of it at the golf course and some things like that, it's a little bit outside our mission, too. So we're excited for the, for the company and glad that they came in, and hopefully it's a great, great experience, and they can give folks who come out to the park a great experience. Are they in attendance today, or they...
No, actually, we invited them, and they were planning on coming, but they had a flight delay, and they ended up canceling.
But it is a local company. It's a local, it's local representatives who are doing it. So we talked to a lot of different groups. We talked to the operator of Village Inn for a while and kind of sorted through that. But I do want to publicly thank Eric for keeping, continuing to do it at a point where they were really sort of refocusing their mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Constantine. All right, Damon's going to come up and talk about the resolution authorizing the execution of amendment to the contract with Sammick Corporation, the guaranteed maximum price for the Tanglewood Clubhouse project. And I believe he's going to be joined by Chris and James to add into this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So on last Thursday, on the 7th, the board had inquired about value engineering efforts on the clubhouse project, both in scale and in scope for the project, and what had occurred sort of through the schematic stage, all the way through construction documents for the replacement project. There was also a question about the location of the cart storage and the option that had, that separates the cart storage from the clubhouse proper. So we've generated a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation that will hopefully speak to those questions. And then on Friday, there'll be an opportunity for the board to, if those that choose to, either before or after your afternoon event there, to actually walk the site and see some of the considerations that were issued during the whole design project. All right, just in short, the initial concept plan, which had the clubhouse on the south side of the property, so this is really the road into the clubhouse. And then today, the clubhouse would sit here, but the original concept was that it would be kind of at the top of the hill. So as you approached, there would be the clubhouse. It was going to be 28,000 square feet approximately. It'd be southern facing. And when they compared, due to the site work, having to move cart path, having to move the golf, it's going to impact one of the fairways. To put the project there and then to adjust those things ended up being about a million dollars more than just leaving it at the current location. So we kind of quickly went away from this version, which was the original concept for the clubhouse replacement. Some issues with the current clubhouse that we have right now that if we were to keep it, we still have to eventually address. So this is the, a wall, and you see the crack that kind of extends the length of the wall all the way down to where you go down to the steps to go to the golf cart storage now. Some of them are outside. And it comes down and all the way kind of into the sidewalks. There's something structural going on that we need to eventually resolve. On the inside, this is really just showing, if you can see my cursor there, this landing, which is kind of really inefficient space that never gets used. Then also, if you come into the clubhouse and go immediately to the right, there's also additional square footage that never gets, never gets used, just inefficient. Most people just use the grill and the pro shop, which are at the bottom. This slide on the right shows a handicap ramp, which we installed, which is really the only way somebody can get to the ballroom, to go up to the ballroom. Now, you can get to the pro shop, and you can get to the grill by going outside if you're handicapped in the weather and go around. But to get to the ballroom, we actually put this ramp in, which is not ADA accessible. It would probably have to be, you know, 30 feet. You'd have to extend around, have the right... You'd have to extend around, have the right slope to get there. So you're either talking about some kind of lift or something to resolve kind of the handicap accessibility issue with the current facility. This is the roof on it now, which we've not addressed as we decide what we're going to do moving forward. This wall here is below the roof, so this is the ceiling, basically the ceiling line. And so you see the mortar is dark because the water actually is coming down, running down the side of the cladding through the wall to the mortar. And you see it's all the way here. So eventually, we have to address that as well as the roof. This is the power circuits here, and you can see where we had a fire. So we've got written on it, out of service, that particular circuit there. We're still using this, and we would replace it if we stayed there. Back in 2021, the county hired Bureau Veritas Technical Assessments to look at all county parks, not just the clubhouse. This really wasn't the purpose behind it, but they looked at all of our facilities and the buildings that were on them. And they noted that for the clubhouse, the current clubhouse life cycle repairs at that time would be a total of about $4.3 million over, you know, the next 18 years or so that we're in. And those were 2021 prices, so today it's probably $7 million. This is a picture of the floor plan, basically. Now, it has been VE'd to be smaller than this, but essentially, it is a rectangle. You'd come in this way for the events, and so here's the equivalent of the current ballroom. And then you come in this south side entrance, which will take you through the golf pro shop and then the new grill. So basically, golf events could take place at this end of the facility, and then other events, reunions, weddings, so forth, could take place on this side of the facility. Whereas today, it's a shared entrance, so you can have a wedding reception, and golfers are kind of traipsing through your event just because it's the same entrance, basically. And then, you know, in the middle, you have a little bit of office space, restrooms, prep kitchen, and that's basically it. There's an outdoor terrace area, which has shrunk as part of the VE efforts, but it's still there. So this has been moved to the current clubhouse site. To do this, if we kept the cart storage underneath the clubhouse, then temporary facilities will be located near Shelter 4 for golf operations, which I'll show you shortly. And then, of course, our cart storage is beneath here. And then the main level's approximately 10,000 square feet of conditioned space. And then below is another 9,500, almost 10,000 square feet of space that's only heated, it's not cooled. And in August of '21, the estimate was $9 million. And so that and the project cost would have been about $11 million at that time. So this is the concept plan before VE work was done. The current clubhouse is 30,628 square feet. The ADA, we had a proposal done by a firm before we started, before we put out for a construction manager at risk, before we put out for design professionals. We had another study done, and they came back with 38,000 square feet for the facility. We pared that down. So through schematic design, we're at 24,000 square feet. And then for construction documents, we have to drop it to 20,272 square feet. Some of the reductions were square footage of the grill, pro shop and restrooms were reduced. The square footage of this kind of event porch here was reduced. The dormers were removed. They were going to repave the existing lot. Now we're just sealing it. The fencing here has been switched to hog wire type fencing, and the landscaping has been significantly reduced. And some of the detail and the rafters here have been removed as well. This is another example of some of the value engineering work that's been done from schematics to now. I won't read them all, but some of the larger ones are, you know, we immediately went to shingle roof from metals and reduced the scale of the building. There was going to be a change to the circulation coming to the clubhouse. We've removed that. I mentioned the seal of parking lot instead of repaving it. From the HVAC controls, open cut instead of boring, VE'd the lighting package significantly, drywall ceilings instead of wood in the corridor. We removed the monumental sign because it felt like by the time you got there, you knew where you were. So we didn't need to have the signs. We cut that out. Eiffel's at the basement foundation walls. You can see a number of the reductions here. This is not all of them. This is really a sample of the reductions to get to where we are today. And these total a million, a million five here. There were some other things that we did even before we priced them. And so the hardy plank, you know, in lieu of pinesiding it at one point, we had on. The rain screen on the siding is going to be applied directly to the building instead of bought and installed on it. Acoustical tile in the grill instead of a more ornate ceiling. We reduced the window treatment package. The bulkheads in the rooms have been simplified. And then even during the construction phase, the temporary fence was going to be eight feet high. Now it's going to be six feet. In October of this year, in a morning session, we talked about different capital projects. And at that time, we mentioned that the first option that actually kept the cart storage beneath the clubhouse, kept this kind of elevated back porch for event space. And then there was a gap of about $4.7 million, and the project budget at that time was $16.4 million for everything, all in, not just the GMP. The second option was $14.9 million with cart storage separate from the building. It would be on grade on the back, so there wouldn't be the elevated kind of event space there. There'd be a little higher operational expense for staff to stage carts during the course of the day. And at that time, we thought it had a gap of about $3.2 million. So this is currently where carts are stored. And this is the parking lot where, if we separate the cart barn from the clubhouse itself, which is basically two tenths of a mile, or 20%, well, yeah, basically two tenths of a mile from the clubhouse. And Mike Wilcox is here from Tanglewood, the golf operation. But as they've explained to me, that, you know, before you get started in the morning, they bring out like 24 carts that you'd have to transport up. You could bring two at a time, so you have two people doing that, so you could tow up four. And then maybe you leave five as you, both of you drive back in one. You keep kind of going back and forth till you get them there. And then as people check out carts, you are continuously kind of running this cycle. If somebody's missing, it's a challenge to staff that. Because right now, you know, the pro shop staff and the cart storage staff are in the same facility. If you move the people who are handling the carts two tenths of a mile away, it gets more difficult to logistically and to make up for somebody who just happens not to be there. But to do that, it would reduce the GMP to about $14.2 million.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the picture?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, why couldn't the red area, which is the actual cart storage building, why couldn't it go immediately to the north of the building there?
You're talking about right there?
Right there.
It's a cemetery. That's the cemetery. There's a church. That's the driveway into the golf course. It doesn't show up well, but that's the historic cemetery.
Cemetery there?
Yes, sir. So the latest GMP proposal was $14.8 million, which includes the pre-con work is in that number. So we'd be amending, we're asking to amend their pre-con contract to include the GMP. That number includes temporary clubhouse for about 18 months at almost $500,000. And then just a note that there's the demo of the existing clubhouse that'll be a part of that. And then we added in a county contingency that we would hold, that would be at our, you know, at the manager's discretion, which would bring the GMP plus contingency to the agenda item amount of $15,277,178. Architect, technology, FFNE, soil testing, all those together equal the amount that the budget director noted was in the transfer for the project as a whole. Now, originally, we didn't think we really had a project at that point as staff until the state authorized $4 million for the project, which would drop the county non-skip funds to $11.9 million. And that's basically the summary of the budget for the project. And again, on Friday, there's an opportunity for you to come out and to look at the site and the different considerations. Today, we also have, in addition to James Anderson on our construction management team, and Chris Weeblen, Ryan Curran from Parks, there is Josh Wright from Sammit Construction is here, as well as Steve Winter from Stitch, the design team, that could speak to some decisions that were made during the VE process and the locating of the facility if the board had questions about that.
And the only thing I would add is when we, if you remember back when we spoke to you in the morning session in October, we had not yet heard about the $4 million from the state. And so, and at that point, I know the conversations that I'd had with a lot of you that, you know, we really were, if the state had not come through with that money, we really would have sort of backed away from it and regrouped, really, in a significant, significant way. The state money really did make a difference there. We are not, I do remember, you know, quite some time ago, kind of reviewing the project as the project cost had gotten up because my recollections of all-in cost, we sat down with you and said, we thought our all-in cost was going to be about $11 million a year or so ago. And because we actually had good cost estimates, thinking that's where we were. The sense I got from the board was, yeah, we'll have a project at $11 million. We'll be able to move forward. What we've seen since then is just kind of rapid price escalation that maybe the folks from Sammit and Stitch can talk a little bit about. But, you know, tremendously thankful to our state legislators for backfilling something that can make this project a reality if the board's ready to do it, so.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Questions for Damon? I'm going to ask one in a second, but I'm doing some arithmetic. Questions for Damon? If I did my arithmetic right, and I may be overdoing here, but it looks like it's about $800 a square foot.
The project cost would be about $788 without the state assistance.
That's just like, that's just like out of sight.
Which includes the architect, which includes our contingency, which includes demo, which includes temporary clubhouse, all that, but yes.
Take that out, it's still going to be, still going to be up there.
Be $682 if you take out demo, temp clubhouse and contingency, our contingency. And if you add, if you took out, if you add the state's revenue to that, and so it would drop it to $13 million, $839 if you took those things out. And if I gave us a credit for the state $4 million, then it would drop it to $485 a square foot because that's the impact of about $200 a square foot.
It might be helpful to.
Money's money. It's a 600.
Well, it might be helpful to have Sammit or Stitch come up and talk to that, so.
Yeah, maybe we could begin that discussion with what was the amount of money we asked for the original design of the company, of the building to be? I mean, what was our, what was our scope, original request in terms of size of building, et cetera?
We green-lighted it at the $11 million a year ago.
It started, I think, where you're going like way back, it was like $7 million before COVID. There was a little different construction.
Well, and it originally started as a, it originally started just as a renovation project.
I recall.
Yeah, and so that number was $1.4 million that we.
Six.
And so we actually brought a project to you, to the board at the time, because the board has changed some. And the sense was that would be throwing good money at bad, was that we really needed to look at something more comprehensive because of some issues that we had with the building. And so that bumped us to about the $6 million range. And then it's been this price increase fluctuation since then, so.
So is somebody from Sammit going to come up and talk a little bit about this issue? Because even, because that $11 million, that was probably, what, 2021 roughly? We haven't had inflation from 2021 that would anywhere near approximate going from a $12 million project to a $16 million project. So I'm having trouble with this.
Yeah, that was about a year ago, so it was not, it was not 2020. It was about a year ago.
I mean, we kind of asked you to design a building. We've adjusted, did all these things in 2021. And then the final thing comes back that ends up being, holy cow, you know, 35% over that budget in less than, in say, two years. I mean, you got an explanation that you were the ones asked to design the building within our scope? You got an explanation for that? And you can feel, be honest and say, we didn't tell you what, or whatever, or whatever it is. But I haven't been happy about this project at all.
So I think we have seen some above-average inflation in the construction industry. Throughout the course of 2022, we were seeing slightly over a percentage a month on inflation for, throughout the course of that project. It has stabilized since then. We're kind of getting back to the industry average of about a percent and a half per quarter. But the pricing that we're seeing from the trade markets right now has not decreased. It's not a recession, recession bid scenario at this point. And there is also, there's a significant amount of work in the triad that the market has to take into account. You have $2 billion worth of bonds in Guilford County. You've got about a $3.5 billion investment from Toyota in not too far away. Binfast, I believe, is investing about a billion dollars down the road. So there's some market factors that have been, that are taken into account. And then the, you know, we follow the public bid laws. I think we averaged 2.93 bidders over all of our bid packages. So we got pretty good coverage when we solicited the market for this project. And that's about the best explanation I can give right now.
Well, talk a little bit about, and I know square footage cost on a smaller building are going to probably drive up, you know, be higher. But what kind of finishes are in this? Something needs to be driving that cost to that, I mean, what kind of finishes are in this thing?
So.
Like lockers, for example, for the golfers. I'm sure there's some lockers probably, right? Locker rooms?
The finishes are not, I would say, over, it's not over-finished at this point. We've dialed that, dialed the finishes back. The waterline costs you're running about, I believe it's about $350,000 to go tie into the waterline down at the road across from the pavilion area. The about $500,000 for the temporary clubhouse to keep the courses open during the course of construction. So there's some costs that this project is incurring that are not typically associated with a replacement project, revolving around the infrastructure that's needed to maintain the Tanglewood Golf Course and bring the new building, bring the infrastructure for the new building up to the demands of the current code.
So help me on, I'm just, I'll admit my naivete on this, just don't know, but there's water at, there's water there now. Why is there another 300, whatever you said, $350,000 to tie into a different waterline? What's, what?
I want to explain that one a little bit.
Yeah, that would be the civil engineer question. I'm not fully beat on that. But it could have been a code requirement or a enlarged size requirement. I also know there's a fire line going out there as well, the sprinkling building. There's gaps that need to be made, code upgrades made. The building was built during a different era.
Is there a lot of wood cabinet stuff in there?
It's very modest. We started in schematic design, taking the county's, you know, goals and objectives and requirements. And David, or Damon mentioned that, you know, the, they worked with a consultant previous to reaching out to us. The consultant said, you're going to need a 38,000 square foot building. Schematic design, we were 20. We're now less than that. So we've trimmed program, we've trimmed the building size. It's a very, it will be a successful building. It's a, it has some great features, but it's very modest at this. The finishes are, they're modest. You can see that we've gone from gypsum board ceilings to acoustical ceiling tile. We had some kind of wood wainscoting in some of the areas. That's all just gone to dipboard walls. We had some operable partitions that have been removed. So, yeah, very well-pointed, well-done building at this point, but modest. And we have been trimming since the first schematic design phase. So delivered a schematic design that met the county's objective goals. We're getting pricing the whole time, always trimming back. aware of, and the, the labor market, labor shortages as well. I think our site package, the site is very complicated too. It is a slope site, so the cart storage will go below the main building, so there's a lot of excavation, there's a lot of concrete walls to support the, you know, the site around the building. So it's, it's different than a building that would go on a flat. And, and I believe we only had, did we only have one bid from the site contractor during one of the bids?
No, we had the initial bid back last, last year in the summer, but this time around, I believe we had three.
We increased that participation.
Other questions? I don't want to belabor it.
Something might be helpful, because we did have, we had a hard number this board moved forward with a year ago that was at the 11 million. If we could get, and we just something we could get to them, if we could get the, the, that level of detail from the 11 million to what we're asking them to do now, I think that'd be helpful. They'd be able to go across trades and see where the, where the increases were. And I think that'll, that transparency will go a long way to at least explaining where we are. So.
Other questions?
Just a couple is all I have for the time. You speak of water problems that they have now. And if the new building would be on the same site this one is, and if you go down to the, or at the same level, starting or a little below or a little above, then the water is coming from somewhere. And this, this current building that's there, it's built in, or the site was cut down into a hillside. And I guess some of the things you talked about you doing for solving a water problem, would that solve that problem even if you put the building on at the same footprint?
Yes, the civil engineer, there is some substantial regrading. We are bringing the grade up so that any water running downhill isn't running directly to the building, especially the subgrade area of the building. And then, you know, very robust waterproofing systems, you know, we do subgrade work all the, all the time and, and do it strongly with contemporary practices and good craftsmanship, but we won't have water infiltration issues with this building.
Well, and the last, as far as other more cost, is in the last couple of years, is material cost and labor cost gone up greatly?
Significantly. The, and, and we can, I can go back and provide some, a chart, I believe we provided a chart to, to the county that showed the increase in commodities pricing through 2022 or through 2021. And it can be updated to reflect commodities increases until, up to today's current date. I don't have that information.
I saw James Anderson earlier.
I hear you did. He's right there.
Okay, right there. I was looking at the back and you knew somebody was going to ask you something. And the other things we've done last couple of years, just in regard to the material cost and labor cost, has it gone up greatly in the last two years?
It really has. There's really three or four main areas where lately we've seen some significant cost issues, I'll call them. That's in the earthwork packages, grading, site utilities, things like that, or have just been astronomical compared to what we feel like they should be and what they've been estimated at. The other one is drywall packages. The drywall contractors in this area, they are just inundated with work that, you know, if they're pricing something, they're, they're pricing it, you know, assumption that they're going to have to bring on temp laborers, or, you know, they're looking at foregoing another project to bid on this one. So they're really being more pick and choose of what they go after. And then the other ones that we're seeing significant issues on is mechanical, electrical and plumbing. Plumbing started to stabilize out somewhat, coming back to kind of where we expect to see things. But mechanical and electrical, both of those have been significantly up. And we're seeing, even though the labor has kind of flattened out a little bit on mechanical, the equipment, we're seeing that the prices for that and the manufacturers is just continuing to climb. And just to give a little bit of comparison too, so that we get some current dollars, just this week, we met with Shellco on the Ag Park project. And granted, that one's got a lot more grading, you know, we're talking about 20 acres of grading, but we're looking at around an $800 a square foot range for that project right now as well, is what we're seeing on that one. So unfortunately, the market is, is gone completely bonkers in my opinion right now. And, you know, I hope that we see some relief in the future. But, you know, the construction market, or especially for government, tends to lag behind the private sector. So until the private sector starts to dip off, we're not going to see any dip in what we see either.
Explain one more to, to me, and I'll leave it for the time being. The, the cost to put it at the same site is less than if it's wherever the other site was. Is that, is a site preparation that much more cost on a new site than it is an old site or the current site?
It is particularly looking at putting at the top of the hill. There is a significant amount of rework has to happen to how that drive comes up, curves around. And then we have to realign the cart path going to the Reynolds course. And so that was, that was really the big driver on that one, is the additional earthwork. It was about a million dollars of additional earthwork that were required to move it there to the top of the hill.
Even netting out, I mean, you had, you had a half a million dollars of operational cost, you know, while the thing is shut down that you wouldn't have if you're building, you know, on a clean site. I'm, 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 I am shocked by that too. And I'm wondering, see, I think there's a little issue because it's almost cosmetic the way it goes into the golf course. It's a lot more, seems to me, reoriented, the golf cart trail is a pretty minor issue, you know, between the golf carts. Seems to me a lot more that is about just some aesthetic appeals of some sort than functionality and real cost.
Right. And so, you know, to the first about the, you know, the operational savings, we did work through a logistics plan with, with Sammatt on that. And with the impact to the parking lot and the grading that has to happen, we could not safely keep the existing clubhouse in operation if we built there at the top of the hill. So we would still have to do the temporary clubhouse down at shelter number four.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a challenge from, from the start on this project. These guys here, they'll tell you that every, every meeting that I was looking at them saying, you know, that's too much, we got to pull it back, we've got to make these changes, that's a little bit over the top on design. If you ask them, they might say I'm a little bit cheap, but, you know, we've been really challenging them the whole time. And, you know, while I would love for this project to have been, you know, at the estimated amount that we had at the end of CDs, just unfortunately, the market did not, did not match up with our estimates that we've done. I feel like, you know, Stitch Design, they've done a, a great job listening to us. And I would say even with some of my pushback, you know, they would push back a little bit and, and, you know, in the end, they would relent and, and understand that, you know, this is a, a public property and that, you know, we need to build it suitable for the public. It doesn't need to be, you know, something like you'd see at Pebble Beach or, or, you know, fancy course.
Why ask about finishes?
Building it just right for the site.
Any other questions?
Well, you certainly have cut back and I appreciate it. At least it kept the project going, but when you go from pinesiding to hardy board, you really have cut back, especially with the design.
All righty. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a recess.
All right. Let's take about five, six, seven minutes? Let's just make it 10.
Yeah.
Very good time.
All right, very good. Agenda item eighteen is a resolution awarding a contract to Triad Roofing Company Incorporated for the Bridges Juvenile Crisis and Assessment Center re-roofing project. James Anderson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you awards a contract to Triad Roofing for the replacement roof at the Bridges Juvenile Crisis and Assessment Center. This is formerly known as the Youth Detention Center. The existing roof has reached the end of its useful life and requires replacement. Wolf Trail Engineering developed plans and specifications for the project, and City County Purchasing formally bid the project, and we received seven bids on November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Triad Roofing was the lowest responsive responsible bidder with a base bid plus alternates of three hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The other bids received were from Allied Roofing of three hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, Owens Roofing, three hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars, Davco Roofing, four hundred ten thousand two hundred dollars, Bar Roofing, four hundred twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars, Hamlin Roofing, four hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred forty-one dollars, and Nations Roofing of a bid of four hundred ninety thousand dollars. Staff had budgeted four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the project, and we recommend accepting the base bid plus alternates. Alternate one is to change the slope of the roof to move water away from the courtyard to the exterior perimeter of the building. This will also enhance the security of the courtyard as it will raise the height about two feet at the courtyard and have a smooth metal panel that will make it more difficult for somebody to try to get over. And then alternate two is to demolish the chimney that's there on the roof. It's got several issues that's allowing water to infiltrate into the facility. It's no longer used, and so this will remove that chimney and take care of those water issues. Triad Roofing has committed to a ten percent M W B participation for the project, and they're a local roofing contractor with their offices located off of North Liberty Street just across from the airport, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Question. Have one observation. The observation, it's interesting that here we actually budgeted more for this project than it came in at, and here's a case where the bid was less than budgeted.
Yep. Thankfully, roofing has started to come back into somewhat a normal state. It's still significantly higher than what we were seeing traditionally, but it has stabilized now that materials aren't as scarce as they once were.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Kirby Robinson is going to come up and talk about Agenda item nineteen. It's a resolution awarding an authorizing execution of a contract with an on-site fleet-related inventory management service. Kirby.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you today. As background and as the board knows, General Services is responsible for maintaining the county's fleet.
It's not shared.
Oh, goodness, thank you. At some point, I will probably figure out how to do that.
Yes, okay.
And in good news, we are not responsible for technology because clearly I don't operate well. So we are responsible for the county's fleet. That fleet is composed of emergency and non-emergency vehicles. It totals roughly seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-two vehicles. That's a point-in-time number, you know, depending on what's happening with the fleet. That can be up or down. But I think it's pretty clear that the fleet has experienced growth since two thousand seventeen, and there are a couple of statistics down there for your review. You'll see that the fleet size in two thousand seventeen was, you know, roughly five hundred and seventy-five vehicles, and two thousand twenty-three were seven hundred and twenty-two. Our expenditures have grown over time, and it cost us three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen to provide auto repair, tires, and operating supplies. Those are basically the things it takes to maintain a vehicle. Those are actual expenditures in two thousand seventeen, and two thousand twenty-three, we have a budgeted figure of five hundred and thirteen. Frankly, I think it'll probably come in at five sixty or so because of our trends so far this year. So if you take that two thousand seventeen number and adjust it for inflation, it's still around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what that tells me is that while things are costing more, we are using more of it. And I think that I suspect that the median age of the fleet is older. Our fuel consumption is up. We're, you know, roughly eighty thousand gallons over where we were in two thousand seventeen. So, you know, we've grown in fleet size, you know, I think some of our vehicles are getting a little bit older, they are taking more parts to maintain, and we're burning more fuel. Just a quick profile of our current operations at Fleet. The division's composed of a manager, supervisor, administrative assistant, and seven automotive technicians. Manager and supervisor are responsible for procurement. We perform roughly thirteen hundred P M's preventative maintenance services a year. That's kind of your planned maintenance of vehicles. The division processes over twenty-one hundred invoices for supplies annually. So as that fleet size, the variability in vehicles, and the number of accidents have risen since two thousand seventeen, I think our observations and our customers' observations are that we have struggled to keep up with some of those demands. We've struggled on some level to maintain quick turnaround times for emergency vehicle repairs and outfits, and to provide P M services that are in line with industry best practices. A lot of that is due to vacancies and turnover in the fleet staff. So to alleviate some of those issues and increase the overall efficiency of the garage, we are proposing to utilize a managed inventory service to handle the procurement of auto repair parts, tires, and operating supplies. The goals, a couple of goals here, that's to obviously increase the overall efficiency of the garage, to decrease repair-related downtime, decrease the wait time that's associated with emergency outfits, and extend the life of the fleet through more P M's. It's kind of like your car, the more you maintain it, the longer it'll last. Kind of what a managed inventory service looks like, it basically brings a provider on site, so they would be in our fleet facility, and they'd be running our parts room. They'd be procuring the supplies that we asked them to procure. They would theoretically be able to buy those supplies at a lower cost than we can because they can use their larger buying power to do that, and they would help us optimize our stockroom. They would help us eliminate obsolete inventory, maintain our adequate stock levels, and manage our associated invoice and core returns and warranty issues. Excuse me, frankly, that's something I really like about the service, is that we actually would not be billed for parts until we use that part. So when we look at our stockroom now, we actually have Crown Vic parts sitting on our shelves. That's an example of obsolete inventory that the county's invested in that a managed inventory service would eliminate because you don't have the carrying cost of inventory and the liability for that. So we went out to the market, and we solicited three bids for the service. We only solicited three because we could only find three providers in this region that provide this type of service. We asked them, you know, tell us your direct cost of personnel, tell us your management fee, which basically is your profit in the contract, and tell us what you think you can save us on parts. You know, to get to that part savings number and to make sure it was reasonable and attainable, we sent them our fiscal twenty-three expenditures as well as six hundred different parts that we use at Fleet, and we told them how much or how many of them we order and what we're currently paying for them. So we gave them a really detailed look at what we're doing there. And our goal, obviously, is to use their responses to analyze the net impact of the service to our budget there. So when we plugged in our fiscal twenty-three expenditures and looked at their responses over a twelve-month period, what we saw is that we got two, we got two bids, one from NAPA, one from F M P, which is Factory Motorports. Advance Auto provides this service. It sounds like they're going to go through a reorganization in this area, and they're kind of stepping out of this service. As you can see, the direct cost, which is really the cost to put a manager-level position on site that handles the ordering, the stocking, the inventory, the invoice, and all of that is roughly the same between the two bidders. Their estimated fee, which is what we kind of refer to as a management fee in the contract, is roughly the same. That's calculated as a percentage of part spend. Pardon me. So NAPA proposed a ten percent management fee. So we look at, you know, our expenditures on parts, we back out our estimated savings, which I'll talk more about in a moment, and then there's ten percent on that number. So again, that's an estimate, but we used it to analyze the bids. F M P proposed a tiered management fee that ranged from eight to fifteen percent, depending on the size of the order. I'll talk a little bit more about how we came up with the savings number, and that equaled the net cost of the service, which clearly came in a little bit higher than we were hoping for. When we step back and sort of analyze the bid, you know, we saw again that NAPA and F M P were relatively similar, except for the estimated savings amount. That estimate was based on, you know, what they could provide, our O E, our original equipment for, or the savings they could provide on that and the savings they could provide on our aftermarket parts. So both bidders feel like they can save four percent, and this is on average, of original equipments. The original equipments, when we go to a dealership and we buy something, a lot of times we'll put O E parts on pursuit vehicles because we feel like, you know, maybe it's rated to last longer. Then aftermarket is where we're buying directly from that vendor. You can see NAPA really sort of distinguished themselves with the savings of the aftermarket parts. They did that by proposing to sell us NAPA-branded parts at NAPA store cost. So if I go to the NAPA on Renova Road, I'm going to pay the same for an oil filter that that store pays for an oil filter. And so that's where they got the thirty percent savings based on our current cost of those six hundred different parts. F M P was about thirteen percent. So that's where the bid sort of diverged. So when you put together a contract for something like this, there are a couple of different parts that go into the total number. You have the total expected parts spend, which is the money that the county is planning to expend on the maintenance of vehicles anyway. That's the auto repair, tires, and operating supplies. And then we adjust that number by the potential savings that contractor can produce on those parts. So you back that out, you add in their direct costs and their management fee, and that gives you your total contract cost for the year. And before I get into kind of what those numbers look like, I thought I would touch on just a couple of other considerations because I think the department felt like in analyzing the bids, there were some indirect savings, especially related to time, that the organization, you know, could appreciate with that type of service. One is in invoice processing. You know, twenty-one hundred invoices, as they progress through the entire organization, we feel like would save about a hundred and sixty hours over the course of a year, and that's based on, you know, the department getting the invoice, the department entering the invoice, all of their various approvals that goes through in cutting the check. We actually calculated some of the average times with that. And then, you know, all of those invoices come from an order. So those orders, obviously, are placed by fleet management. When they're placing their order, they're having to go bid those supplies, reconcile those invoices. All of that would sort of be compiled into a monthly statement from the provider. So you go from over twenty-one hundred invoices to twelve invoices, and that obviously comes with detailed backup, but that's part of the service that the managed inventory service provides. The other is really a hard cost, potential savings in inventory, and this is not reflected in our savings number. You know, the industry average for obsolescence is about six percent. They say
Roofing has started to come back into somewhat a normal state. It's still significantly higher than what we were seeing traditionally, but it has stabilized now that materials aren't as scarce as they once were.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, James. Kirby Robinson is going to come up and talk about Agenda Item 19. It's a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract with an on-site fleet-related inventory management service. Kirby.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you today. As background and as the board knows, General Services is responsible for maintaining the county's fleet.
It's not shared.
Oh, goodness. Thank you. At some point, I will probably figure out how to do that.
Yes, okay.
And in good news, we are not responsible for technology because clearly I don't operate well. So we are responsible for the county's fleet. That fleet is composed of emergency and non-emergency vehicles. It totals roughly 700, 722 vehicles. That's a point-in-time number, depending on what's happening with the fleet. That can be up or down. But I think it's pretty clear that the fleet has experienced growth since 2017, and there are a couple of statistics down there for your review. You'll see that the fleet size in 2017 was roughly 575 vehicles. In 2023, we're 722. Our expenditures have grown over time. It cost us $365,000 in 2017 to provide auto repair, tires, and operating supplies. Those are basically the things it takes to maintain a vehicle. Those are actual expenditures in 2017. In 2023, we have a budgeted figure of 513. Frankly, I think it'll probably come in at 560 or so because of our trends so far this year. So if you take that 2017 number and adjust it for inflation, it's still around $450,000. So what that tells me is that while things are costing more, we are using more of it. And I think that I suspect that the median age of the fleet is older. Our fuel consumption is up. We're roughly 80,000 gallons over where we were in 2017. So we've grown in fleet size. I think some of our vehicles are getting a little bit older. They are taking more parts to maintain, and we're burning more fuel. Just a quick profile of our current operations at Fleet. The division's composed of a manager, supervisor, administrative assistant, and seven automotive technicians. Manager and supervisor are responsible for procurement. We perform roughly 1,300 PMs, preventative maintenance services a year. That's kind of your planned maintenance of vehicles. The division processes over 2,100 invoices for supplies annually. So as that fleet size, the variability in vehicles, and the number of accidents have risen since 2017, I think our observations and our customers' observations are that we have struggled to keep up with some of those demands. We've struggled on some level to maintain quick turnaround times for emergency vehicle repairs and outfits, and to provide PM services that are in line with industry best practices. A lot of that is due to vacancies and turnover in the fleet staff. So to alleviate some of those issues and increase the overall efficiency of the garage, we are proposing to utilize a managed inventory service to handle the procurement of auto repair parts, tires, and operating supplies. The goals, a couple of goals here, that's obviously increase the overall efficiency of the garage, to decrease repair-related downtime, decrease the wait time that's associated with emergency outfits, and extend the life of the fleet through more PMs. It's kind of like your car. The more you maintain it, the longer it'll last. Kind of what a managed inventory service looks like, it basically brings a provider on site, so they would be in our fleet facility, and they'd be running our parts room. They'd be procuring the supplies that we ask them to procure. They would theoretically be able to buy those supplies at a lower cost than we can because they can use their larger buying power to do that, and they would help us optimize our stock room. They would help us eliminate obsolete inventory, maintain our adequate stock levels, and manage our associated invoice and core returns and warranty issues. Frankly, that's something I really like about the service, is that we actually would not be billed for parts until we use that part. So when we look at our stock room now, we actually have Crown Vic parts sitting on our shelves. That's an example of obsolete inventory that the county's invested in that a managed inventory service would eliminate because you don't have the carrying cost of inventory and the liability for that. So we went out to the market, and we solicited three bids for the service. We only solicited three because we could only find three providers in this region that provide this type of service. We asked them, tell us your direct cost of personnel, tell us your management fee, which basically is your profit in the contract, and tell us what you think you can save us on parts. To get to that part savings number and to make sure it was reasonable and attainable, we sent them our fiscal '23 expenditures, as well as 600 different parts that we use at Fleet, and we told them how much or how many of them we order and what we're currently paying for them. So we gave them a really detailed look at what we're doing there. And our goal, obviously, is to use their responses to analyze the net impact of the service to our budget there. So when we plugged in our fiscal '23 expenditures and looked at their responses over a 12-month period, what we saw is that we got two bids, one from NAPA, one from FMP, which is Factory Motorports. Advance Auto provides this service. It sounds like they're going to go through a reorganization in this area, and they're kind of stepping out of this service. As you can see, the direct cost, which is really the cost to put a manager-level position on site that handles the ordering, the stocking, the inventory, the invoice, and all of that is roughly the same between the two bidders. Their estimated fee, which is what we kind of refer to as a management fee in the contract, is roughly the same. That's calculated as a percentage of parts spent. Pardon me. So NAPA proposed a 10% management fee. So we look at our expenditures on parts, we back out our estimated savings, which I'll talk more about in a moment, and then there's 10% on that number. So again, that's an estimate, but we used it to analyze the bids. FMP proposed a tiered management fee that ranged from 8% to 15%, depending on the size of the order. I'll talk a little bit more about how we came up with the savings number, and that equaled the net cost of the service, which clearly came in a little bit higher than we were hoping for. When we stepped back and sort of analyzed the bid, we saw again that NAPA and FMP were relatively similar, except for the estimated savings amount. That estimate was based on what they could provide, our OE, our original equipment, the savings they could provide on that, and the savings they could provide on our aftermarket parts. So both bidders feel like they can save 4%, and this is on average, of original equipments. Original equipments, when we go to a dealership and we buy something, a lot of times we'll put OE parts on pursuit vehicles because we feel like maybe it's rated to last longer. Then aftermarket is where we're buying directly from that vendor. You can see NAPA really sort of distinguished themselves with the savings of the aftermarket parts. They did that by proposing to sell us NAPA-branded parts at NAPA store cost. So if I go to the NAPA on Renova Road, I'm going to pay the same for an oil filter that that store pays for an oil filter. And so that's where they got the 30% savings based on our current cost of those 600 different parts. FMP was about 13%. So that's where the bid sort of diverged. So when you put together a contract for something like this, there are a couple of different parts that go into the total number. You have the total expected parts spend, which is the money that the county is planning to expend on the maintenance of vehicles anyway. That's the auto repair, tires, and operating supplies. And then we adjust that number by the potential savings that contractor can produce on those parts. So you back that out, you add in their direct costs and their management fee, and that gives you your total contract cost for the year. And before I get into kind of what those numbers look like, I thought I would touch on just a couple of other considerations because I think the department felt like in analyzing the bids, there were some indirect savings, especially related to time, that the organization could appreciate with that type of service. One is in invoice processing. 2,100 invoices, as they progress through the entire organization, we feel like would save about 160 hours over the course of a year. And that's based on the department getting the invoice, the department entering the invoice, all of their various approvals that goes through in cutting the check. We actually calculated some of the average times with that. And then all of those invoices come from an order. So those orders, obviously, are placed by fleet management. When they're placing their order, they're having to go bid those supplies, reconcile those invoices. All of that would sort of be compiled into a monthly statement from the provider. So you go from over 2,100 invoices to 12 invoices, and that obviously comes with detailed backup. But that's part of the service that the managed inventory service provides. The other is really a hard cost, potential savings in inventory, and this is not reflected in our savings number. The industry average for obsolescence is about 6%. They say, based on our inventory that we have now, about 6% of it is wrapped up in obsolete parts. We have not calculated the value of our current inventory, which the board could elect to sell to help fund this, because again, we could then buy those parts theoretically cheaper with the managed service provider. That's a potential savings there, and again, there's no liability for core returns and warranty issues. There are a couple other service areas that I think could share in the savings of the contract that buy similar parts. One's our ground maintenance staff. They have to maintain their equipment with tires and similar parts. The other is parks. And the other win, I think, that's potentially out there is with the school system. So we're looking, obviously, at a co-location and maintenance services project that we're constructing in addition to the fleet facility. And I think sort of what we're proposing here is a pilot program, obviously managed by the county, that would run through fiscal '25. That's when the Sourcewell contract for NAPA expires. So it's kind of a natural time to then look at a potential bid again. The school system is interested in this type of service. If they were to come onboard in fiscal '26, if we could demonstrate that the program's effective and the board felt good with it, we could combine the fleets. They could still be separate, but they could combine into a singular contract, and that would reduce the direct cost to both organizations. And it would basically really help accomplish, I think, that co-management or co-location goal. So here's kind of what the contract proposal looks like. We're proposing a contract that would run March through June of fiscal '24 and all of fiscal '25. The estimated parts cost and the vendor cost equal the total not to exceed value of each year. The estimated parts cost that we're showing there already include the potential savings that the vendor could provide based on that previous analysis. The vendor cost includes their management fee and the direct cost of the personnel on site. It's $223,000 for the remainder of '24, March through June, $671,000 for fiscal '25. And what we saw in that previous slide is there was still a net cost to the county, and we want to be, we want this service to either save money, which we were hoping it would initially do, and unfortunately, it didn't come back like that, or be as net-neutral as possible. And so what we did is we said, well, we have one full-time vacant position that is inventory-oriented in another division that frankly, that service, whether it's this contract or not, some enhancement at Fleet is needed because we do have some issues there that are service-related that we need to address. So we could cash that position in, funnel that money into the contract, and then the net impact of that is sort of shown on the screen there, that we have the estimated part savings, you have your vendor cost, your position reduction, and that gives you your net impact of roughly $11,000 in fiscal '24, $32,000 in fiscal '25. If the board were to move forward with this contract, we feel like the net impact in fiscal '24 could be managed within existing funds. The FY '25 impact could be in our budget request, although I would not anticipate that because we would work very hard to offset that in other areas. Again, we want this to be either a savings or a net-neutral impact to the county. Now, let's quickly note that while we hope, we really hope the program will generate savings beyond these estimates, because they are estimates. I think having the school system out there is a real carrot, if you will, to the vendor to continue and work hard to provide these types of savings for us. But at the end of the day, these are estimates. They are based on actual expenditures from the past to analyze the bids and our current spending patterns for this year to generate the proposal. But there are some, these can vary. Our historical numbers might be based on, for example, we're replacing four transmissions a year, let's say. Well, maybe next year, 12 transmissions go out. Well, that's going to cost a lot more money. That doesn't necessarily mean that the program's ineffective. It just means that our parts cost went up. So that can affect the value of the contract because we have to build that parts cost in there. So that's a lot of information. I think at the end of the day, we recognize that we need to get more efficient at our fleet division, and that's to address the growth of the fleet. We want to make sure it's sustainable and we take care of it, and that we keep these vehicles on the road for a long time. And we see this as a path to providing continuity in that area and a way of helping us address some of the staff issues that we have there. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. Look forward to it.
Questions for Kirby. I'll be real short. I sent Kirby an email, and I appreciate your response, and kind of got it. And I think I'm usually always in favor of contracting kind of issues, generally speaking, and usually you save money. This one, you have to do a lot of work in thinking, come up with savings, but I think you might, and I think you're right about that. I'm probably also, this is maybe a report for another day, is to take a look at how we have grown by basically, you're earlier in our emergency vehicle numbers by, I don't know, 130 or 40 vehicles in five years. And I'd be real curious to kind of what that looks like. I mean, for another day, to kind of get, I mean, as you mentioned, sort of off the top of your head, we have resource officers, 30 cars, that's in the mix. There's other, we've got, I think, more people driving SUVs and responding differently in our things. But I'd be, we've had a substantial, that's a big percentage growth in just vehicles, and that's accounting for a whole bunch of the overall cost. And that's a root issue here, is how many vehicles you got. So I'd just be real curious about how that happened over time and what those vehicles are, how many spares, how many are this, how many are that. Just a little, I mean, you're very thorough, this was very thorough, and a similar kind of thing. Anyway, but the big picture, I like the idea. I won't spend any more time.
I should have noted, in terms of reporting, I would love to come back, if you want to move forward with this, I'd love to come back to you in a year, once we build some metrics to demonstrate effectiveness and report back to you on how this went. You know, I don't want to, I think we've done as robust of a job of looking at it as you can, but they are estimates. I think that they're good. We've had a lot of folks look at them. I think that program can be successful with the more expenditures we direct towards aftermarket parts, obviously. So we need to make sure we're cognizant of that. But I mean, I would want to commit to coming back to the board with some metrics and some performance data to show you what this looks like, to help inform a potential longer-term contract for fiscal '26, if you are interested in moving forward now.
But one real short question, because in your original materials, you mentioned that this position that you're reducing is vacant. How long has that position been vacant?
Three weeks or so.
Just a short period.
Yeah, I think what you would have seen in our budget, quite frankly, is a request for an additional position at Fleet. And so rather than do that, we want to be, we want to be good stewards of county dollars. And so we can figure that out in this division, where the job currently is, move it over here, use the cash to pay for the contract.
I got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. We've got a couple of vehicle purchases. Steve Brenniger is going to come up and review Item 20, which is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of a Ford Transit 350 van. And then Emergency Service Director Joey Hunley is going to come up and talk about a light rescue body on a truck. So Steve.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Sheriff's Office is requesting us to purchase a, excuse me, requesting us to purchase a 2024 Ford 350 medium roof transit transportation van. This van is going to have a prisoner transport module in the back. It can divide down the center, so you can transport male and female inmates at the same time, which will save some trips going down the road. This van will come directly from Ford, fully equipped, except for any kind of graphics, which I don't believe they are going to put any graphics on it. Looking, I talked to Ford, Piedmont Ford, which is this vendor for this vehicle. It is able to be purchased, and we should receive it upon board approval, and we get the PO for it. I believe he said about 120 to 150 days. I know the State Department of Corrections is no longer providing transportation services, so now the responsibility lies on the Sheriff's Department, going back and forth to some of the prisons. I do have Captain Bruce here to answer any questions on that, any other usage. Like I said, the van will come with blue lights also, siren, speaker, console kit, switches, and the prisoner transport module, and also some DVD video surveillance, so the driver or the passenger can see what's going on if there's a problem, because it's kind of hard to see without that kind of video technology, because I've actually seen one of those vans in work. And I kind of looked at the cost of the outfit. Of course, we wouldn't be doing outfit. It'd be directly from Ford. Just Ford builds the vehicle, sends it to whatever vendor they use to outfit the vehicles, and then it comes directly to the dealership in Greensboro. This van is also, can be purchased off the North Carolina, sorry, North Carolina State Contract, 0708. I did, when I looked at the contract, I couldn't verify the percentage discount, so I reached out to the state, and they sent me a letter saying that some kind of mix-up did when they loaded their system. So their percentage off was not being able to be verified, but she's verified that it is 6% judging by their bid. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because if you go to look for it, it's not there. I'm wanting to make sure we used diligent on making sure that was the right percentage rate. And like I said, I looked at, it probably cost us around estimate, because some of the equipment had a siren, but it didn't say what model it was. Our cost, I'm estimating about $30,000 if we had to buy it and outfit it ourselves, which right now, we're still trying to get other vehicles outfitted, so it would save a whole lot of time to go ahead and purchase this vehicle ready to roll. Any questions?
I've got one quick one. Is there, and this is more probably for the Sheriff's Office, is there any big reason to put the siren and all that kind of stuff on it? I mean, it seems to me this is a transport vehicle. It is not a chase-pursuit vehicle. It's not a, all those kinds of things. I thought the vehicle design was great, and I don't know what that extra cost, but I'm just trying to decide why do we need a licensed siren?
Well, that vehicle, sir, would already come equipped with that. It's really just an option of if you want red or white, or red or blue.
Yeah, because I actually read the list of options, and that was included as an option.
It was included as an option, but it doesn't change the price on that. It just comes already outfitted with that car. You just have to choose what you want in that regard. As far as the reason why the equipment would be on there, if we had an emergency where we had to use it here in locally, we would use those licensed sirens to get out to, if we had to go out and actually pick up somebody, like a large group of people, and keep them segregated so they don't fight with each other, we could do that in that van.
I agree with that. Let me answer this question. You know, this issue of the state backing off transportation, I mean, what they're supposed to be doing, because I've had this conversation with Captain there, is that, in fact, our lobbyist was in today, and I think maybe we need to be putting in there about, the state needs to be taking care of the things that they say that they're going to take care of. This is another pushing down to local levels to pay for stuff they ought to be paying for. And the cost of this van is only the tiny parts, you've got the drivers, the maintenance, all these other kinds of things that go with that. And I'm sure, it'd be great if we had, I don't know how hard it is to get, but if you could roll up a year's worth of expenses that we have in transport, that'd be a great thing to say. I don't know, legislators probably don't pay any attention, but the point is, we ought to be, somebody ought to be advocating for them doing what they say they're supposed to be doing.
I agree, sir. We've approached them numerous times. There are excuses that they don't have at the staffing level, like so many other agencies across the state.
Yeah, like we don't necessarily have staff available either. But if you could get that information, a year's worth of transports and the average expense, or some kind of way that we could document that, it's a better way to advocate.
We should be able to break part of that down.
For that, that'd be really helpful. Anyway.
Chair of the Mark, two things that, one of them, what you're asking for, since they stopped transporting prisoners, we're right at 2,400. That was in the custody of the sheriff in the jail, went to court, judge said, you're out of custody, park correction, or whatever amount of time, we have to take. Vehicle that we're asking for, one is not going to be paid for out of county fund, but it's going to be through the state criminal alien assistance program. Yeah. Pay, quote unquote, my tax dollars, citizens of this county. Money will be transferred over, so that's one self point. My opinion, the other is we can condense trip. I'll use an example. Tomorrow, we've got 14 people going to prison. 11 of them are going to Craven Correction, five-hour drive. The rest of them are going to Women's Prison. Right? That's going to take three vehicles. At this vehicle, we can load the males of one compartment, the females of another compartment, have a female deputy, a male deputy, ride down the road, stop at Women's Prison, drop the females off, and move on to Craven Correction. It's a trip.
Yeah, well, it looked like a great vehicle, versatile and all that kind of stuff, which I thought was really good. That's a good example. But anyway, y'all could help us. I'm not sure we can get anything on the, put the state on those. Do you all know whether it's a statute that requires the transport, or is this just a regulation that they typically do, and they did, and whatever?
Well, the office picked it up, and it said, we're not going to pick them up no more. I know I went to a conference with the general administrators of North Carolina, and the question was posed to the North Carolina Sheriff's Association's lawyer. Question was asked, he said, next question.
So what if we just said, we're not going to transport them there?
Well, then we sit in our jail.
I guess we'll be the prison for them.
That's exactly right.
We're still incurring a cost.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the statute states that the sheriff shall send the inmate to DOC, and in the past, you may have seen those buses running up and down the highway, and so DOC was providing that service, for whatever reason. I'm sure to save money, as was stated, they have stopped doing that.
So it's just the sheriff shall.
Yeah. I don't know of any direct statutory requirement for Department of Corrections to provide transportation, but even if there were, sometimes the state does what it wants.
I got you. Sorry to belabor it. Thank you.
Chairman, I do have one quick question. With the van, is there not another escort van following, escort car following the van?
No. There'll be two officers in the vehicle for security measures.
And I'm assuming there's some kind of cyber where you can kind of watch them travel?
Yeah, so there is a camera system built into the vehicle for each compartment, so the passenger in that vehicle can keep an eye on the passengers in the back.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Hunley, come on up. Resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract for the construction mounting of a 12-foot walk-around light rescue body to Custom Truck & Body Works.
Good afternoon again. Earlier this year, the board awarded funds for us to purchase a chassis for the replacement of the light body rescue number 109, which supports the county fire departments for our fire division response component. And so this is the second part of that piece. So we're asking that we send out bids in October for a 12-foot walk-around light body rescue to mount to the chassis that we already owned. We've got the chassis in hand. The two bids were, two bids came in, Southern, Southeastern Specialty Vehicles and Custom Truck & Body Works. Custom Truck & Body Works was the lowest responsive bidder at $174,200. We're asking for an additional 5% to support any contingencies as far as construction goes, with the total amount being not to exceed $182,910. We will need to follow up with a resolution to move, just to move the money over from the overlay tax district into the CPO fund or the 107 fund in order to support purchasing this. But I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions? Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Yolanda Bolden is not in the audience, so Damon's going to do it. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Overdrive Digital Incorporated. Damon.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is an item that's a renewal of kind of the backbone of our electronic platform for people are able to access our materials. It has downloadable eBooks, audiobooks, bestsellers that are, again, that are downloadable. We're a part of this digital library consortium, and so there's a maintenance part to that. Then there's also bestsellers and holds management, and then there's also $85,000 for titles just for South County cardholders. So again, this is kind of a renewal of a backbone part of our online library, and I'll try to answer any questions, and hopefully Yolanda will be here to really answer questions.
Any questions?
Nicely done. All righty. Shannon Hutchins is going to come up and review a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Mark III Brokerage Incorporated for comprehensive employee benefits consulting services for insurance, flexible spending accounts, short and long-term disability, and wellness initiatives.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This resolution...
This resolution awards and authorizes the execution of a contract between the county and Mark III Brokerage for comprehensive employee benefits consulting services and rejects all other proposals from the request from proposals process. County staff issued an RFP soliciting proposals from benefit consulting firms to assist the county in negotiating and securing employee benefit services, including insurance, FSA, disability coverages, and wellness initiatives. The county received three responsive proposals. Mark III Brokerage submitted the lowest proposed cost, also meeting the specifications and providing comprehensive services of the RFP for a fee of $50,000 per year for a term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2024, until December 31st, 2026. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Two questions. One, what is our fee right now?
$35,000 per year.
So it's increased $15,000. My curiosity question is, there's a huge difference in the bids for those other two vendors and Mark III. Why is that? That suggests something in the, in the RFP that's a little different to me. I mean, usually, when you get huge ranges and lots of bids, there's a reason the RFP is, that's kind of what it's written to. Like it might, it could be advantages for one place and another, a service that they provide or don't provide. I'm just curious why, what these others said in their response.
So the county was clear in their request for proposals that we do not allow, we did not authorize the broker or the consultant to accept commissions. And so Mark III is the only broker who came back with a proposal that did not include commissions. We did have dialogue with the other two responsive bidders about that after we received the proposals, and you see the, the price that they came back with per year.
If you remember, you know, we.
So that was a change, was that not, was that a change in our RFP from, say, the last one?
No, we've always, so, you know, what we have asked for is we want to pay a reasonable amount of money for the expertise that Mark III brings us, but we are, we are in a consulting agreement with them and not a brokerage agreement. And a lot of these vendors, you know, because it's more financially beneficial to them, they want to be in a brokerage agreement, and then we never actually see what those are. And so we go through this process where, and there are a few companies that, that pay out some commissions, and Mark III just rebates them back to us. So it's, you know, it, Mark III's a little, they are one of the few firms that really specializes in the local government sector, and so most of their client base is local government. And so it's just a, just a different, different arrangement, one that I, it always baffles me why more local governments don't do what we do, but.
I agree. Any other questions for Shannon?
Great. Thank you, Shannon. All right. Ashley Matthews is going to review the resolution authorizing the agreement with Diligent Corporation, which is our agenda management system that we see and love and all that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this item before you is a three-year contract with Diligent, which is our current agenda management system. And this contract covers agenda management, appointed boards, and video streaming services. Informal bids were received. I spoke to three different companies, Diligent, Civic Plus, and Granicus, and those are the three main companies that offer this service to counties. And Diligent and Civic Plus came back. Granicus did not receive, did not turn in a response, and as you see, Diligent came in at 25,305, and Civic Plus came in at 26,722.
Any questions?
This is the system that actually, our video platform rides on, so when you see a meeting and it matches up and all that, it's, it's the public-facing side of it, and it's the back office side that helps our small staff of Rosalind and Ashley get all this information put in. So it's been very helpful.
Yes.
Get our agendas early, get our materials early.
Yep.
I like it.
All right. Good. All right. So you've got appointments, and they close or closed?
They closed December the 11th, and so all applications have been received, and they are also attached to the agenda.
Right. Fantastic. I've got a resolution extending the 2024 tax listing period. John Burgess can come up and mention what this is, it's a thing you do every year, but you can give us the exact date of when it's late, because I always file late, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Your approval of this item would extend the general listing for Forsyth County for the 24-year from January 31st until, it would extend it to February 15th. There's a 10% late-list penalty for those that list late, and so this does help with things like mail and things like that. Related to this item in listing, individuals can request individual extensions on certain accounts up through April 15th.
Questions for John. Thank you.
All right. Couple of reports that you can see there, and that is it. Mr. Chairman, it has been a long day.
Yes, it has.
Yes.
Anything for the good of the order, otherwise, we're adjourned. How about that?